Welcome, everybody. Thank you for your patience as we get the tech sorted through. Our first meeting of 2023, which still feels kind of weird. But thank you for joining us on the traditional land of the Tlalman Nation where we are honored to just wait together today, live and learn. So, oh, and thank you also for accommodating the earlier time today. It's definitely well-suited for a couple of us who are traveling over for a regional meeting on the island. So we've got our environmental science students, Brooks Waste Audit Team here today to do our first presentation. Thank you. Welcome. Go ahead. Everyone gets one of each. Would you like to introduce yourself or you're ready for your presentation again?
Yeah, my name is Katie Mitchell.
I'm Brian Pedersen.
I'm Miles Peterson.
I'm Jordan Adams.
And I'm Scarlett Harrow.
And good afternoon. Today, we're here with Mr. Kosage's environmental lab class. Around the beginning of October, our classroom is by the Let's Talk Trash, What Is Waste? Presentation, which we brought for you guys if you guys want to look it over at any point. To collect data for our school's waste and help with a few solutions to manage our waste better. Us five students took together the, took the task on to put the data we found together and present it to you guys and share some of our decisions.
Just click on the arrow of local disk.
Which is pull it out, plug it back in.
Turn it off, turn it off.
That's PowerPoint, but it's not too easy.
So how prepared are we for an introduction?
And Graham said that he'd sent it to you earlier. Did he?
He, I got it while we were in our other meetings.
Okay.
It was sent like at 2:30.
You can just sign it as you, you can put it in your email.
I'm just putting it onto my, this memory stick, so I'm hoping that it will work.
Yeah, you can do that. To pick up any profile.
As 11th and 12th grade students studying environmental science, we decided to conduct a waste audit at Brooks Secondary School to see how our waste compares to the rest of our community. Our goal was to understand the extent of poor waste management at our school and see how it could potentially impact the future if we don't change our habits. On a global scale, humans generate a staggering 2.12 billion tons of waste each year. In Canada alone, we contribute 18 million tons to this total. The result of the Less Talk Trash Audit showed that 42% of all waste generated in the Kowatbet region was organic waste, while 60% was household hygiene products, 12% was plastic, and 6% was paper.
It's clear that waste management is a pressing issue, both at school and globally. By understanding the composition of our waste, we can work towards finding solutions and improving our waste management practices. At Brooks, we have a new administrative staff and head maintenance. So we believe it would be the perfect time to look and see how our school was doing and what changes could be made.
Our sampling process with our waste audit was quite lengthy, but for the end results was worth it. We started off with dividing the rooms in our school and putting them into categories. Classroom, staff rooms, halls, like hallways, et cetera. And we split into groups and worked on a map of this school. Like this, or sit down with this. And where all the garbage bins were and the locations we picked. Then we numbered all the bins from each location and picked a random bin to sample. We picked 40% from each location. Each group took on an area of garbage to sort. Then we decided on the categories we'll be organizing the waste into. Compost, household, recycling, soft and hard plastics, garbage, and paper. And then we made different stations in our classroom dedicated for each location of garbage to be sorted. We sorted everything into bins according to their category. Afterwards, to find the total weight of each category, we took a bathroom scale because we didn't have access to a scientific one. And then we weighed one person from our group to get their body mass. Then the same person held each category while standing on the scale. Another person from our group was recording the data on paper without calculations. And then the same process was followed with our zero waste stations.
So as for the results of that data collection, we found that around 85% of recycling and of the recycling from our zero waste bins was, did not end up getting recycled because of contaminants put into the recycle. So just if one contaminant is put into a bag or more, it's not going to be sorted through. So it ends up that the number is bigger because that whole bag won't be recycled. So for example, for paper recycling, 36% of it is only recycled because of contaminants. The rest isn't recycled. So there's certain improvements for different things that may need to be applied or analyzed more than other things.
And so you also have some of the data section show you what you're talking about there? So these are our zero waste bins at our school. We have eight of them. And as you can see, the writing here is telling you what is in those bins or what can go in those bins. And we've come up to the conclusion that when a kid's walking through the hall and wants to do something out really quick, they're not going to stop and read it. So our idea here is to take what you have there, enlarge the items on it that you can go in and put it up on the backboard instead of having it there so that it's first base value to them and not like below. And then just that images are bigger, so people stop and read anything. So it's be more visually appealing to them.
Another idea we have is educating the kids in our school. So basically during lunchtime or breaks, we suggest that the hall monitors and the teachers that are already stationed in the hallways for supervision stand by our zero waste stations and direct the students to where the waste goes in those bins. Those teachers or students will be previously informed of the situation and how the stations work. As well as students will be informed that teachers or students will be at the stations helping and guiding them just to get into a habit going. And then this could take, this could only take place for two weeks at the beginning of a year, a semester, or anything. Just to get a habit going and just as a friendly reminder to where everything goes in the zero waste station.
Our ideas for resolution for the containers, the container section and the zero waste bins are almost always contaminated and must be disposed of, meaning not sorted properly. We took it upon ourselves to try and come up with a solution to our problem. We ended up talking to Con and Nickerbacher and have discovered a possible solution, including our environmental club and culinary students. Sorting and rinsing out the bottles so that they can be disposed of properly at the end of each day.
So we feel our zero waste is all waste. The bigger picture is if we don't find a convenient solution and work together to better our waste management, we are just going to be another part of the problem.
Question. So you mentioned contaminants, and I think you made it really clear on the beverage containers. So it would be contaminants would include just dirty containers. So in the other categories, what is the most commonly found contaminant?
Um, so mainly just things getting mixed up in between different containers because it's not super clear where things are going. Like maybe some wrappers making the compost or...
Or some compost making the garbage.
Yeah.
Others, or there will find apple cores and like recycling the paper, which contaminates that. So the two most biggest ones of that one is if there's any like spaghetti sauce gets in the containers, that whole bag is garbage, so it ends up going in the trash. And then compost, if any like metal or wrappers, like tinfoil kind of stuff that's in there, that bag also really can't be composted. It's not safe. So those are the two biggest ones, the contaminants. The garbage isn't as big because it can get thrown out with anything in it, like technically, but it's just not good for our environment.
Any other questions?
I think this is great that you're doing this. One of the questions I have is in your work, did you have any insights into materials that we could find another way rather than even producing the garbage? Because then you have to recycle it. Are there things going on at the school that we could avoid the garbage in the first place in terms of packaging? I mean, were there things that you saw a lot of that went away? And if that's over packaging, maybe we could...
Um, it's mostly from the containers. It's also like paper plates or like something from cafeteria.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's something we didn't really look into, so.
Yeah.
And then most of the stuff that's been contaminated is like home brought items.
Yeah.
Some like banana peels, which you don't produce at the school, like the corners, you know, the silver like sell bananas in the containers. And that's just like all trash now.
Wow, you've got me thinking about my own recycling.
I wonder if there's been any consideration, like I know the idea of a station is that it's all, you know, in one spot. But I wonder if having some element farther away. So this is clearly the spot on the map where the garbage goes and this one is for compost, for example.
Yeah, so we just saw the price of those zero waste stations, which you guys, or the school has, and it's like $16,000. Like every bin's like, I think it was $4,200, something like that. So we want to like be able to still use those just in a market ship way because that's like a lot of money going to waste that way. So we're trying to like figure out ways to use that. One other thing that was like kind of idea that we didn't really put on here was the containers never really get used or properly. So usually they get thrown out and then mixed papers. Everyone does their papers out in class. So another idea was to cover up those two, so we only have trash and compost until we are a little more comfortable with them. So that was one other idea.
Well, thank you for all the time and energy and thought that you put into this. And we look forward to seeing what you decide to do to take action on some of these identified issues. Thank you.
Maybe your, maybe your idea of having a bigger picture of those, each of the bins will be picked up by other places.
Yeah.
Because I know it's a real issue.
Well, thank you, Jackie. I'm always there with my glass. Now where does it go?
Well, even putting it just on the wall is odd if you can't alter it without testing something. No, great research. Yeah, no, you have to. And then let the other students know that if you care, like someone's trying to be whatever. Well, now that's all, and not everyone will care, but let them know the consequences.
There's a big education.
Yeah. I know. There's like the cash, is that the word? I've got it on the left, but I love it. Oh, I love it. So good. Oh, it's so easy to do one. And kids love. Yeah. So normally I would print it out and I see it back then, but sorry.
It's okay. We're just waiting to get the presentation.
We should really recycle the packaging.
Oh, my God.
So they don't.
I wish I could have it. Lego, black ones, like the swag. And it used to come in plastic, not into paper.
It's lovely graphics.
How was your trip? Even though it was a while ago. You guys were in Mexico. You got down to there before.
Okay.
Ready to go?
You ready for us?
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, so this is a, this is a group effort. And so essentially what we're doing is part of the Admin Procedure 100, which is the update to the board on the annual cycle. So we have myself, Kristin, Tony, and Jessica all contributing to this update. Is it not this one, Steve? Can you line this down? No?
Yeah, never mind. Got it.
So this admin procedure is part of a bigger piece, obviously, that all of you are aware of. And it does get cycled into the Ministry Service Plan, which is typically a four-year plan, like your strategic plan. And the ministry outlines their service plan yearly, just as you and, and we outline our annual cycle based on your strategic plan yearly. And so the Ministry Service Plan, which includes the latest mandate letter that was, was released from our Ministry of Education and Childcare, feeds into the District's Teach Up Plan and then every single school's improvement plan or growth plan and each of our individual kind of operational slash work plans. So that's kind of how this fits into the four-year cycle and the one-year cycle. So for this particular strategic plan, we are at the end. So a lot of the updates that have happened over the last couple of years were initially from the start of the measures for the strategic plan and student success, engagement, and organizational sustainability. This is really small print. I apologize, but the strategic plan is from, you know, four years ago. I'm sure all of you are very familiar with it. And essentially what we're going to do is just talk a little bit about some of the high-level pieces in terms of where we're at midway through the final year of your strategic plan and some of the next steps that we're hoping to take, not only this year, but maybe giving some food for thought for the strategic planning that's about to start for the next four years. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessica first. We used to have a slide that had sort of things that were sort of outside of the individual objectives from the strategic plan. And a lot of the Indigenous education pieces were outside of those objectives deliberately from the, from the board that designed the strategic plan. But it is nice to be able to kind of weave them in as we go. So I think you'll notice that some of the overlap that we have will be interesting to kind of connect in the next strategic plan. So I'm going to leave that there. So Jessica can go ahead.
All right. So I just prepared a little graphic to kind of tell, tell a little bit of the story of Indigenous education. What I have on the front page there for you is the Indigenous and non-Indigenous completion rates. Unfortunately, the ministry data has been updated for the past year, the one that I have access to through the Equity and Action RVI. Portal doesn't have the latest data, but the story around it is kind of that, you know, small cohort sizes for Indigenous students contribute to high volatility for completion rates. And you can see that in the very zigzaggy line for Indigenous students there over the past 10 years. And then this past, you know, the last, the very end of this graphic is the year that the district had embarked on the Equity in Action project that I spoke a little bit about. So historically, there are a number of gaps for Indigenous learners. One through their educational outcomes, their success in school. And I wanted to connect those to some contributing factors before I moved on. And then again, as, as the recommendations from the continuing Equity in Action work get put into place, we're hoping that translates into holistic success for Indigenous students and all students. So the first factor that I wanted to highlight is those social indicators and achievement gaps. So Indigenous people, it's very well documented that poor health outcomes is, it's pretty well known, whether it's mental health and addiction, reduced life expectancy, more chronic disease, and, 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 higher rates of poverty and lower education levels. And that kind of leads to this stigmatization of Indigenous people. The Auditor General's report in 2015 kind of highlighted that racism and low expectations for Indigenous students. And all of that is kind of, I think, connected and cycling around these indicators. Oh, this student isn't coming to school. Oh, the parent must not care about education. And then it kind of creates this story and this narrative that isn't, you know, it has, it's based in a little bit of reality presently, but there are a number of factors that contribute to, to why that, that story is being told. So the factor number two on this side is colonialism, both historic and ongoing forms. So things like settler colonialism, exploitative colonialism and genocide around the Indian residential school system. That creates for Indigenous people this story that I don't feel safe at schools. I don't want to send my kid to school. And so you can see that these impact the, you know, the social and achievement gaps for Indigenous people. Factor three is that there's still bias, prejudice, discrimination, and racism, both historic and ongoing, which written in the mandate letter is highlighted a number of times, which I think is, you know, makes it timely for us when we're thinking about strategic planning and how we can use this letter to, you know, guide, guide some of our goals. So especially around educationism, even from the global trends of rising racism, school boards, teachers, and staff. We need to have the tools to respond and fight racism in our educational system so all students feel safe and able to learn. So, and then finally, there's systemic barriers, both historic and ongoing for Indigenous students. I've got little points there. If you flip over this sheet, I've put a couple of, you know, an impact statement of how, you know, my thinking a little bit and some of the actions that we've been trying to take to address Indigenous student success and wellbeing in schools. So the first thing is one of my main goals and objectives is to have this strong and action-oriented relationship between Schools 47 and Tlalman Nation as the, you know, rights holder in the region. And then in, in that same spirit of reciprocity and collaboration. And one of the ways that we've seen that come to fruition is through the signing of a new TBA, which we're all very excited about and hopefully it has meaningful impacts for Indigenous students and students broadly. The second impact is that we're trying, I'm trying to ensure that there is culturally responsive and identity-affirming education, educational opportunities for Indigenous students. So we're building that scope and sequence. One of the ways that that has been historically done is through the cross-culture program. We just brought it back post-pandemic and it was the 27th year that it's happened. And people were very excited to see it back. So grade three, four, and five students got to participate in culturally relevant exposure to the Indigenous community in the region and do a lot of hands-on learning and experiential stuff. We're starting a grade seven retreat this year where we're hoping to have all of the grade sevens region-wide come together for a land-based culturally immersive programming where they can connect with others before they head to the high school. Story to song, we're targeting this program that happened historically and we're trying to bring it back for the grade eights and nines. And the traditional skill builder is coming back and that will be for 10 to 12 students. The Ia Jutum was ministry-approved and it just got posted on their website, I think, I don't know, two days ago maybe. So Ia Jutum is now ministry-approved from grade five to grade 12, which is really exciting. And then we're doing this ongoing work to evaluate systemic issues that are impacting cultural safety for Indigenous students. Impact three there is that Indigenous increase the knowledge base of all students in that region. So one of the ways that we've done that is we've hired an Indigenous success teacher. I think I alluded to her last time, but I asked her for some data. And as of last week, she had gone to 169 classes to support through a co-teaching model, bringing in Indigenous worldviews and perspectives into the class. And so that's very exciting because it's happening through the year. And I'm like, wow, almost like almost 200 classes have been impacted by, by that support. And then the fourth one is that I'm trying to increase the knowledge base of all staff in the region. So the way that we're doing that primarily is through professional development, a number of ways that we've been doing that collectively. And as an Indigenous ed team, supporting student success and holistic wellbeing. So we have our chef worker that goes around to all the schools in the region and supports TexAid virtually and Pi. And yeah, so that's kind of more of a social emotional focus and also a cultural focus. And so there's both that cultural support in the school. And then in pack six is increasing the knowledge base of Indigenous ed staff. So again, trying to layer these supports so it will triple out. But the Indigenous staff, we're trying to build our own competency in being able to share broader topics and with, you know, with more confidence on all different topics. So we're like, we've done a salmon barbecue and then we took that knowledge that was shared by an elder when we were learning as a team. And then we did a salmon barbecue over at TexAid Elementary. So we're taking these learning opportunities as a team and then making sure that there's increased opportunity for the district. As well as we've attended as a team, the Finesse Conference in Vancouver just in December. And then we have those Tusham Tuesdays where that salmon barbecue, we have another one coming up next week where we'll be doing some of our 13 moon planning and learning there about button lichens. So eventually that will trickle into the classrooms and that's some of the enriching experiences that students will receive from it. And then impact seven, and it's kind of the most exciting piece for me, is this, we're kind of in this phase of transitioning from the, the scanning portion of our Equity in Action project to an operationalizing, I guess, the equity for the district. the equity for the district leadership level, which we were talking this morning and we're going to, you know, really try to practice what we preach at a leadership level. And we might be doing some guided conversation and study about, you know, building our own knowledge and recognizing the importance of collective effort and meaningful involvement of all staff. So that's kind of the coles notes of some of the stuff that's happened in the last, you know, year and a bit. Yeah, any questions? It's a lot. I would keep talking too, but I won't.
There's definitely a lot of information to be dealt with. And I think too, just a bit of time to digest some of that. And, you know, to have you relatively new in the role and a number of these layers also relatively new. I know that we're all very excited to see the fruits of that labor and see what can pay off in dividends in exciting times.
Yeah, it's kind of a slow, like getting the gears greased and then hopefully we'll be taking off and then seeing how that impacts students in terms of, you know, grad rates and, you know, all of the data pieces. But in terms of, the most important thing to me is that students feel safe and welcome and willing to learn and that it's relevant and meaningful to them. Jessica?
Where, I don't know where the best place to stand is. You want, wherever makes you happy.
Right there.
Okay, here I am. Champs, can I just see your smile? Okay, my next question too is I know we have a fair amount of time, so like, how much time, just be aware, how fast do I have to talk? I've got online, I'm not going over. Okay, all right, I'll try and talk to you faster. So I'm going to start with the increasing readiness of students entering kindergarten. And I'll keep it brief, this part, but it's really exciting what's happening. Like, there's been lots of things happening in the district for a long time about this. Collaboration with the kindergarten teachers, kindergarten orientations. It was kind of neat during COVID to see some of that evolve and change. So I'm excited to see that happen. We're looking at some different, a different way to assess our incoming kindergarten students to determine who needs those extra supports. So that's something we're exploring right now for those students coming in on the fall. But also I wanted to point out, and I know I've said it lots, still super excited about the Seamless K at Edgehill and the two preschool programs at Henderson and Westview. And then knowing that, oh, and our new, not new, but our district vice principal of early learning, that's been in childcare, it's been huge because it started really small, this whole thing, and it's really grown. And again, by the letter, we know that it's not going anywhere. We're going to continue to support that. But the SEY2KT is a really exciting initiative that we sort of put on hold while Ron was doing his role at Edgehill. And so we'll start that at the fall and we'll look at school and how we can build the community of all those people that support the students before they enter school and when they're into school and how we can work together to kind of find a way to ease that transition. So it's a really good way of trying some different things out. So I'll have lots more to say about that as we progress. Oh, now it's me again, so I'll start with literacy, which is, I feel like that's all I ever talk about. And I always think, how much have I actually already said? So I don't really want to repeat it. But I do, it has been a huge work in progress over the last few years. For me, it's been my biggest focus in the, besides early learning, in the strategic plan. I'm really happy with the way it's going. There's a real system in place where we assess students three times a year using our standardized assessment, the DIBLES. And then not only do we assess them, then we go in and I meet with the school teams, which include the principal and the student support service teacher and the intervention teacher. And we look literally at every child and determine like, how it's going, what's going well, are they improving, what do they need? And so that's really exciting. And then the school team then meets with all of their classroom teachers. And so we're just, we're just wrapping up the mid-year assessment. And so that process is happening in the next week or two. And I'm going to say, I feel like we're getting great results, but we won't really know till the end of the year. And I'm really curious to see, we haven't got our FSA results back, so we can't really speak to that at this point either. But I'm really hopeful that our data supports what we're seeing. And again, I can provide you more information even in a month. And then, oh, and then also the work, it's really become a passion with the schools and they really are buying in and putting their own spin on all of it as well. And every single elementary school has literacy as a goal this year, which is great, so I'm really pleased with that. So I will let Alison continue on second.
Awesome, so similarly, the process at the high school mirrors what happens at the elementary school. And so we share and implement promising practices when it comes to literacy, especially adolescent literacy. We are often looking at professional learning and professional development to help build the capacity of the educators in the system. We are looking at different kinds of activities to support students who are needing extra support or are perhaps needing some intervention. And that looks a little bit different at the high school in terms of how they support the students within the context of an individual classroom and then a learning assistance room. So a little different than having an intervention team. The team is more immersed in the cross-curricular areas at the high school with supports coming through the learning systems room, but also the classroom teachers and the work that they're doing to kind of push in. In terms of the kind of exciting progress that we're making, the literacy results, we've always had strong results, especially around literacy 10. So that's been a positive. When we look at our report card data as well in terms of interim marks from this year already, we've seen with the model that they've used for all teachers, all full-time teachers, pushing in and doing some pull-out with all vulnerable students. We saw a reduction of interns at the intern date, which is great. We're coming up to semester one turnaround, so we'll have the data on course completion to also use to see how that's working and if we need to do any tweaks. But from the evidence so far and the pieces that we've looked at, that particular model is working well. It's interesting, and maybe when we get to engagement, I'll touch on it a little bit more. The intern piece really kind of identified attendance being the major issue with students struggling in their classrooms. And so that's a little bit more of an engagement rather than literacy. Also, the approach to cross-curricular literacy, the ministry started this when they redesigned some of the pieces of the English Language Arts curriculum and all of the curriculum. And so we are seeing this shift in the way that high school teachers are talking about literacy. And so there's much more conversation about disciplinary literacy as opposed to, hey, English teacher, this is your role. So that's really exciting in terms of progress, even just this year. And even though Brooks's main goal is on school culture, a second movement that we're seeing is within disciplinary literacy.
So what's disciplinary literacy?
It's like how to think, or how to think like a historian, how to think like a scientist, how to think like a mathematician.
You're in trouble.
Yeah.
Gotcha, how would you get in trouble?
The other, the other big piece, and it was mentioned by Jessica, is we implemented the English First Peoples 10 as a requirement for our district where it was possible. A year before, the ministry actually made that Indigenous-focused requirement part of the ministry's graduation requirements. And so we are seeing some of that benefit already. We had, when we started the process, it was only going to be English First Peoples 10. And then suddenly, students were like, well, I'll take English First Peoples 11. And so now we have grade 10, 11, and 12 running this year. And it was last year when we were only thinking it was going to be 10. So that's been some real movement and progress within the English First Peoples and the English Language Arts curriculum. And then the last piece around literacy that I'll mention is we also partake in a kind of a provincial team called NEST, which is like a network of secondary teachers. And it's full of district principals and directors and teacher coordinators and that. And one of the subcommittees released something that they want to pilot. And there seems to be a little bit of interest at Brooks, so I think that's going to be our next step. And it's a literacy scan. And so really looking at the literacy environment and then the pedagogy around literacy and disciplinary literacy and how we want to build a team to connect to the work that was already started last year with a K to three literacy framework and then build that out to a K to 12. So that's a really interesting development and progress that I want to share.
So in terms of numeracy, similar, again, our state results are not out. And I guess I'm talking about the places I'd like to go first. But one of the things I've been striving for since I started this job is finding a numeracy assessment that kind of meets the needs of our district like we were able to at the literacy assessment. And I have not met with success yet, and I'm not the only one. I know it's a conversation I've had with district leaders, at least on the island. And I know there's some work being done in some of the bigger districts. And I'm hearing even Coast Metro might be creating something that they would then make available to all of PC. But that is really hot on my high to-do list for at the end of this year and next year. And really, it's about like, so we've created this learning environment looking at student needs for literacy. And I feel like we need to like really focus on that with numeracy as well. The tricky piece being that there's kind of two parts to numeracy and kind of making sure that we get on the same page as well, that literacy isn't just computation, or sorry, numeracy is not just computation, but there's actually that numeracy, that thinking around numeracy and problem-solving. And so it's complex and that's why it isn't an easy fix to find something. So that's very much on my radar for coming up. I also didn't mention it in the literacy, but I want to start, now that we've got report cards on my end, we can actually analyze report card data, which is where I'm hoping to go with principals, so they can look at their data in their own schools and kind of see where some areas of need are and make sure that they're supporting that. Also, we didn't mention in the literacy that I want to mention is we're doing elementary grade group meetings. And probably now it's going to be February it's we're going to start. But I think having a literacy and numeracy approach so teachers can choose which we start together as a group and talk about some kind of learning practices as a whole and then divide up and do some work into two groups, literacy or numeracy depending on their interest level. So I'm anxious to see where it goes with that. There is a large number of teachers that are really interested. We did that Thinking Classrooms Books Club last year that was really successful and I get teachers stopping me and saying, hey, I did a Thinking Classroom lesson. I'm like, great. But it's just, you know, how do we, how do we make it grow? So that's kind of where I'm at with numeracy. And having a new numeracy coordinator is helping with that as well. So she's going in and working with classes, making herself available at each of the schools, co-teaching. And she is, she knows so much about numeracy and has top 10, so yeah.
Similar with numeracy and literacy, as we discussed, it is about analyzing some of that data. So we do have student success conversations and not just within each school, but cross-school as well. So I work with Jasmine, Principal of Brooks, and Stephanie, Principal of Pi. We also work side by side with Jessica and some of the teachers involved with AMSTOW. And so we're looking at, you know, all areas, but in particular, literacy, numeracy, and some of the social, emotional pieces that are tied to engagement as well. And so that is an ongoing action that we do. And part of the conversation is, well, you know, what programs do we need to kind of tweak? What's missing? What are the things that we can be implementing? You know, short-term, medium, long-term. And so that is part and parcel of the school improvement process as well. And then also looking at the opportunities for collaboration from teachers to do things that are very similar to that numeracy 10 assessment, which is a grad requirement. And so the grade 18 and the grade 19 have continued to co-design literacy and numeracy assessments for their students. They all take the assessments. The teachers then come together, mark the assessments together. And that is a way to not only inform their strategies going into their classrooms the next day, but then it's an opportunity to do, see where the gaps are with that particular class and then compare it to the next time they do it. And I believe they're doing it three times a year. So that's for the numeracy. And then the strategic plan, objective of increasing secondary grad rates. We have continued to use the multi-tiered systems of support model at the high school. And that's a way to ensure that all students are getting that, sorry, I'm going to edgy speak, but that tier one, all the strategies that are used in a classroom and are available to all students. And then in a tier two, those are the smaller groups of students that need some more support or different support to meet the learning standards of a particular course or a particular program. And then the tier three, which is TONI and Student Support Services, not always tied to there, but that's where it's more individualized. And perhaps it's tied to their IEP and their school, their IEP goals. But it can also be accessing outside agency or the help of a school counselor or a different support teacher at Brooks. And so that model, we kind of redesigned and did a refresh of the handbook that goes along with that. So we're carrying on. It's a lot of, the building of the capacity of all staff is slower. And so this is something that will obviously be, I'm imagining, part of the objectives of the next strategic plan as well, to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students at each of those tiers. And then when you think about the secondary grad rates, we have had an increase, as I had probably mentioned when we did the Thessal, over the last five years, even the last 10 years, and even bigger jump. But the last couple, we've kind of stagnated. And there's lots of different reasons why that could be, COVID being one of them. But really, the mission is to increase our secondary grad rates because we know that they're much lower than some of the provincial averages. And then when we look at some of our populations, whether it's students who have an IEP, so diverse disabilities, or our Indigenous students or our children who are in care, who's in care, we know that the outcomes for them are a lot lower. So a lot of the strategies that we're using are to increase for all, but in particular, those vulnerable populations. So we did do a lot to support that. We increased the counseling time. We were able to provide another academic advisor. We were able to increase some of the Indigenous success teachers across the district. The ADST and career support, I think he calls himself the innovator. And so there's been lots of K to 12 work without particular role as well. And then part of the pieces around last year's program reviews, one of the needs and gaps that we saw, we implemented this year, we moved the Continuing Education Program back into VIU. So the continuing educator could actually connect with both CE students and support VIU students. And not just in their academic courses for credentials, but for their adult basic education. They have a really cool pathways program now that links students who maybe don't have a high school diploma or don't have the right prerequisites to get into a specific career. That's kind of a bridging of current sort of status in terms of skills and knowledge and then building them into the opportunity to go into a different field. And so we strengthen our relationship with VIU to do that. And then also recognizing that just because there's not going to be enrolling certain students that the support is there, both VIU and AMSTOW. So that was a kind of a change. And that seems to be going well in terms of the relationship between VIU. There's been some turnover in terms of AMSTOW staff and more hiring. There's some, there was been some turnover in terms of Ams Town staff and more hiring. So that is still ongoing, but we had a really good meeting just recently and we're scheduled to meet again in the next three weeks. So in terms of increasing secondary grad rates, we have a lot of strategies that we are implementing. And then at the end of the year, you'll get that Thessel update to kind of show where that progress has been made. Okay. Improving the readiness of students for life after high school. So a lot of the metrics for this comes out of the student learning survey, which is just about to start or open started, okay? And so we know that some of the pieces connected to students around, do you feel prepared for life after high school? Some of the comments have been, no, they don't feel ready. And so Jasmine has been doing some focus groups with some students as well, not just on this particular topic, but kind of a broad topic in terms of the school culture piece of her school and getting some really interesting feedback. And so a lot of that has to do with feeling prepared. And we do have our career education courses in a class, not all districts do that. And so that's been a huge help, I think, for the CLE and the CLC to be scheduled into the rotation of a four day schedule. We've also increased the amount, and I said this last time when we were talking of those programs and specialty areas for students to access. So our hairdressing program, getting them set up to take the, challenge the exam and get their hours, youth work in trades, our culinary program, our film program, so all of the dual credit that's available. So all of those pieces are contributing to making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students so they feel prepared and ready after they graduate. Some of the other strategies that we used to do quite regularly and then some of them fell away because of COVID have been brought back. So you were all witness to that huge sort of fair that was out in the parking lot at Brooks, and that kind of brought lots of trades and tech knowledge to the student body beyond Brooks, happens tomorrow night. And that's an opportunity for grade 11 and 12 students and their families to come and learn about the different pathways. So not only just information about education within the graduation program, but what to do next. And so that's going to be taking place tomorrow. And then the, what else is, oh, actually, I think we have VIU, North Island, and potentially, I think, Hummosen, and they are visiting the school as well. And so all of these opportunities to kind of use our partners and invite them in so they can share their expertise and their information for students so they do feel prepared for life after high school.
I just realized, and this is a lot of information to take in.
It is.
I was going to say kind of be down. So prices break down. Anyways, I'm happy to touch base a little bit about supporting mental health needs and wellbeing of students and employees, recognizing that it is a longstanding sort of need within our community and the province. And it's been a huge mandate from ministry, but also highlighting or acknowledging that COVID has had a significant impact as well. So I'm going to talk a little bit, it's a huge kind of area. I'm just going to do a few touch points and think of a few next steps. And if Kristen or Allison want to chime in, because there's a lot of overlap in terms of roles and responsibilities. So anyways, in terms of looking at mental health needs and wellbeing of students and employees, just in terms of staff, our wellness committee is very active and they meet regularly and they have several different initiatives. I think the last one being the winter wander, where we are promoting, you know, local shopping, but also, you know, spirit of competitiveness and crisis, which is always not a date. Also, Home with Health, just, you know, promoting all of the various resources that are available through Home with Health and some professional learning sessions. Also, you know, EFAP supports that are available. There's also the community of practice, the K to 12 wellbeing, like staff wellbeing, which is interprovincial kind of, we have a BC one, but it's very common also. They have a strong group, and so we participate in that as often as possible. And then I know that through LifeSpeak, they have a mental health campaign in October that we promoted amongst all of staff. And then for students, I'm just going to touch on, obviously, all of this is founded on the mental health in school strategy, which focuses on compassionate systems leadership, capacity building, and mental health in the classroom. I won't go into great detail about the mental health in school strategy, but essentially the foundation of that is the Pathway to Hope Report, which talked about how we're doing our province in terms of mental health and substance use. And it was not great report. And also the Erase Strategy. And so in terms of supporting our students, we added on to our family school liaison worker. We've hired another person to work alongside with Lindsay and provide supports for our students in outreach capacity. We've also created the active living and mental health coordinator position. So Dean has been working with schools. We started with kind of a soft landing with the EAS program, the Everyday Anxiety Strategies for Educators. So every school has all of the resources for that, and he's been going in to help facilitate lessons. We just talked recently about maybe stepping back and looking, recognizing that we are seeing the younger grades of the kids coming in, the social emotional needs that are there, obviously pandemic related, and how can Dean support teachers in classrooms with social emotional learning? I think also just the importance of student voice. So we do have, last year, there was Mental Health Fair, which some of you went, I remember seeing some of you last year, which was organized by Jerry Brock and the Mental Health Youth Mental Health Advocacy Group, and they did a survey. And those students have actually been participating in the district health committee, and the feedback has been fantastic. So then from that, those youth voices, also from the Youth CAT, that led to some facilitation on Allison's part with some different groups at Brooks, just some talking circles to get feedback and to help inform planning and next steps for mental health supports, which has been very successful. And also some release time for the PhD department at Brooks for planning for mental health curriculum. In terms of next steps, we're going to continue with the promotion of mental health in school strategy. We are looking at having hosting, Kristen and I are looking at trying to plan a grade seven wellbeing conference, which is modeled off something in another school district, but getting, we've had one here before, but it was mostly, I think it was mental health and wellness, but it was kind of like, what do I call it? It wasn't a conference, it was a.
Like a different booth.
Station, they went to different stations. And so this is looking more at some kind of engaging with local speakers to see and having student voice involved in the planning process as well. So that's really exciting. And Dean is actually piloting mental health literacy in two classes this year, which it's a pilot year for mental health literacy. It's been a high school program for a long time, and they've just released the elementary version. So that he's going to be doing it at rescue and at James Thompson. And so the James Thompson's group will be participating in a study to give feedback to the people who created the program. But it would be really nice if we could see it expand to other classes because it's so necessary. This next one here is all about improving our culture of acceptance, tolerance, mindfulness, and respect, which is really foundation of the Erase Strategy. And the Erase Strategy originally started as an anti-bullying kind of strategy and has marked over the years to include, you know, mental health and wellbeing, anti-racism, SOG inclusive educational initiatives, compassionate systems leadership, and also substance use. There's, I mean, it's quite a broad range. So this year, we've started with some compassionate systems leadership, professional development for the leadership team, the administrators. Also, we're carrying on with that ongoing promotion of the Erase website and the resources that are available, many professional learning opportunities. The sexual health educator is carrying on this year, and she's focused on grade fives this year. We also brought the Out in Schools program, which was super helpful, having SOG lead at every school, and Allison could talk to other SOG initiatives. But also participation in the second annual Black Excellence Day, that was a virtual day that we just had, and our treat and reconciliation week and all the activities. The other thing I wanted to highlight is that all of the schools do have social, some form of wellbeing or school and community connectedness, social emotional learning and engagement, which I think connects well into this goal area. James Thompson and Texas Data have been focusing on social emotional learning and trying to come up with a common language for their school. Ashville's been engaging their learners through the outdoors. Kelly Creek is, one of their goals is about fostering connection, so connection to self, connection to others, community, and to the natural environment. Rescue's goals have been in terms of engagement and connection. And Pi also has a mental health and wellbeing in terms of fostering connection and engagement. And Brooks is all about culture and belonging and connectedness. Next steps, I think, for us are to continue with our compassionate systems leadership work, promoting, trying to get mental, you know, some of those resources in more classrooms, offering professional learning opportunities. Willow would like to offer a sexual health parent session. I think sometimes it's scary for parents when they hear sexual health education, and she focuses a lot about healthy relationships, self advocacy, she talks about consent, so lots of great information for parents. The other thing I think that, you know, we're wanting to look at is based on our student learning survey results from last year, we noticed that that sense of belonging and connectedness to school community was not as high for our students with diverse needs. And so we're bringing that to our students for our services to be able to say, how can we, you know, what can we look at in terms of trying to engage our students and help them foster that sense of safety? Can I put the mouse on Allison?
So this particular one is around the appropriate and ethical use of social media. So in the first couple of years of the strategic plan, we did have a lot of emphasis on some in-service and professional learning for educators and staff around digital identities, digital professionalism, how to use social media, and then also integrating opportunities into classroom technology, but also blended opportunities, and how to do that in an ethical way through like FIPA, for example, the privacy guidelines that we follow. Last year, we also added in the opportunity to review the APs to make sure that some of the APs were reflective of explicitly stating some of the social media pieces. So that was also done. And then this year, so this year, it's really been just kind of looking at the particular social media just in the classrooms and having the new director of technology. It's been a minute for him to kind of take a breath too. And so that will continue in the future. And I think when we look at that mandate letter around equity, that digital divide piece, that was becoming, became very, very apparent in the pandemic, is also going to be a big piece of the movement that we do with all of our educators. The digital divide isn't just access to the computer, it's the access to opportunities to practice with digital skills. And we need to have teachers have digital skills in order to teach students to do that too. So that's kind of our next steps in the social media world.
This next one is about fostering engagement in learning and community, so promoting that amongst our students. Kristen had met with some grade seven, six, and seven students previously to determine some, you know, how can we better support their feelings of belonging and feeling safe at school? And I think that's something we'd like to revisit. I think we had great feedback from the students, but then it's that next step to give that information to the schools and also connected to the, you know, students with their diverse needs. And as mentioned previously, you know, many of our schools do have an engagement as part of their school road plan and recognizing that engagement and connectedness are protective actors for children. And so those are really important pieces to promote. Also, just, you know, really trying to create opportunities where we can solicit student voice and provide professional learning opportunities for teachers around differentiated instruction, universal design for learning, and learning opportunities that do allow for voice and choice. This year, I'm excited to, you know, we have participated for a long time in the MDI survey. We are shifting this year to grade five instead of grade four because we felt that our grade four group was very heavily, they do the FSA, they do the student learning survey, so we shifted it to grade five. Be interesting to see the results from last year to this year because this is a whole form. Normally you can't look at cohorts with MDI. So we're participating in the MDI, and this year we're also participating in the YDI, which is for grade 11 students, is the first time we've ever done it, which is partnered with SFU and Health, with Maryland Project. And we're also, I can't even speak. We're also participating in the Career Health Survey this year, which those results are super informative at many levels. And I think with the implementation of competency based IPs has been really helpful in, you know, including student voice and having them take kind of ownership of their learning in those planning meetings. Next steps is for us to plan for the grade seven mental health and wellbeing conference, look at elementary grade group meetings, as Kristen has mentioned earlier, and then take that, those results from those MDI or YDI surveys and help that data to inform our next steps in our planning. Because I think that's, you know, anytime we can capture student voice, it's, that would be less.
The employee engagement, so this is really kind of a joint effort, obviously, from HR, the communications plan, and some of the work that we do as directors. So I'm really only going to focus on the pieces that we're doing. Actually, Izzy was involved in some of the onboarding checklist that we did, and so some of that's been passed off now to HR and Brett in orientation. We had a really fantastic new teacher TTOC orientation at the beginning of the year, and then we decided to continue with our new teacher learning series. Session one is, had to be postponed because we had the snow, but it will actually happen tomorrow. We're really excited. That's been a collaborative effort from the PRDTA and the district. And then in terms of the Teacher Mentorship Fund, that ministry initiative from, I think, two years ago, gave each district money to implement a mentorship opportunities within each of the districts. So we're still dispersing some of that funding, and I work collaboratively with Izzy to manage and then promote the mentorship pieces of that. In terms of next steps, it's really going to be a lot of the same things that we're doing and seeking input and feedback from all of our groups to see how we can improve.
And I'm the last one, I'm going to tell you that ahead, and I know it's been a lot, so I'm just basically going to say, because you know about how we are establishing a framework with strategic planning and continuous reporting. And I guess the only thing I would want to add is, you know, knowing that it all aligns in terms of school goals and then your goals and the ministry goals. But also that some of the work that Allison and I do is the ongoing conversations we meet regularly with principals and vice principals to support them implementing it in their schools. And I think that's an important piece and actually connects really well to the compassionate systems leadership and some of the other things that we're doing just to, to build our leaders capacity as well, because we're all, we all want to create an environment of ongoing learning and growing. And yeah, so I think that would be all I'm going to say about that because we said lots. Actually, I haven't said much.
You guys do everything. Like I want to give you a standing ovation. You do it all. This is my favorite stuff, so I could sit here and listen a lot longer, but I really appreciate it.
Okay, Matt, that makes me feel so good. Are we forming to?
No, no.
Actually, I was going to say, thank you all so much for your contributions today, but also just in the interest of time and volume of information, I wonder if we could distribute these.
Yes.
Thank you. Amazing.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Okay, so that brings us to question period. Okay. This year, January 13th marks the second annual Black Excellence Day in British Columbia, a day to demonstrate our commitment to learning about Black history, Black art, and Black people. There are many Black shirts throughout SD47 demonstrating a stand in solidarity with Black Canadians. Then the district purchased seats for all students to take part in the Black Excellence virtual event, a space held to provide a meaningful, inclusive, and accessible experience for students across Canada. We're proud of our students and staff who recognize a critical role each of us has in demonstrating our ongoing commitment to moving forward together in a society that is grounded in equity, is curious, knowledgeable, and appreciative of diversity and culture throughout our community. Each January, communities across the province celebrate Family Literacy Week. This year, the celebration is from January 22nd to the 29th. Dikota, the province-wide literacy organization, has announced this year's theme title, Make It Count, Play, Sort, Measure. School activities will be profiled through district social media channels to highlight some of the literacy-focused activities students will engage in throughout Literacy Week. Week, and I can promise they'll be fantastic. Anyone can visit the Dakota website for free Family Literacy Week resources. Dakota also holds a family, annual Family Literacy Week photo contest, open to all these C residents for a chance to win prizes. Lastly, as we begin this new year, we also begin the vitally important process of developing our twenty-three to twenty-seven strategic plan. We're looking forward to strengthening our understanding of the complexities involved in building a solid strategic plan as a new board. It's an exciting time for all of us to think about what's possible, and we look forward to engaging with all stakeholders to help inform planning and share goals to support student success. Okay, and we can just hop right into a motion then, that the regular board meeting agenda of January eighteenth be adopted as circulated. Rob and Tori, all in paper, carried. And a motion to adopt the minutes, that the regular board meeting minutes of December twenty-first be adopted as circulated. Jaclyn and Kristen, all in paper. Thank you. Just a report of the closed meeting of December twenty-first, and then moving us to income and correspondence. Questions, comments, concerns about income and correspondence? I did get an opportunity to have an intro to Minister Singh, and I'm excited about her contributions to the Ministry of Education and Childcare, so we look forward to catching up at the Board Chair Liaison meeting in coming weeks. So there being no further questions, motion that the correspondents listed for A to B be received. Rob and Tori, thank you. I know everybody's in a rush now. Outgoing correspondence? We have a number of pieces there, anyone here to make comment? Jay, I was wondering about the Festival of Performing Arts. Were they soliciting donations to continue their work? Oh, they were, okay, I didn't remember that. I'm just trying to find our agenda now.
So we're doing a whole agenda pass, which is to support students with the fees to go to the festival, and then we also help with the speech arts education, the speech arts part of the festival.
Right. Okay, and so that will bring us to Superintendent of Schools. Oh, actually, no, outgoing, wait a second. Outgoing correspondence, sorry?
There's three additional pieces, pass the
Yeah, so no questions, comments, we've got Ms., SD47 to Ms. Riddle, thank you for presentation, SD47 to Hagus Hackit with the Sloman Education Agreement, which we've put a lot of emphasis on over the last couple of weeks, but of course, we're all excited that we finally have that in place, and we have such a strong group of people really working towards, you know, bringing to life the elements of that agreement.
Just wanted to comment on the name change, I don't know if you sent to Hagus Hackit?
Okay.
That came from the board. I just thought it was well-written, and it's nice to see the start of the process to be engaging about the TA oversight team, finishing the dialogue about the name change for the district.
Yeah, I think we'll see a lot of excitement around the renaming, for sure, and just a, you know, proud of us, proud of this district for the decision we've made to move forward with that conversation, and also putting it forward in very capable hands to begin that conversation of what it looks like for our district. It's exciting times, for sure.
I think I should probably point out too, we had a letter suggestion from Jaclyn to reveal her support around the cause of that, and I'm interested in supporting that that gets funded and going forward with the federal government, and in discussion with Jaclyn, we thought it would be best to move that to, because we now have a TA, and two committees of the TA, so we've asked them to look at the letter and how we can support and advocate together to the federal government, so it hasn't been lost, it's just moved to the committee to look at.
I hope it's for a joint letter to go from the district and the nation.
Which is an echo of sentiment too, that through the work of the VCS TA to the federal government, so it's good to have that local conversation about why those matters are important, and also to just complement each other in that work. Thanks, Jay. Go ahead.
So the first is the Mental Health Literacy Resource, and this is initiated by Dean for himself to pilot in a couple of schools over the next few years to, and it resonates with the conversation that we had around our strategic plan, and how difficult it is sometimes to measure mental health and how students are doing, the idea is that it's going to create a resource and also an assessment of the resource, so he's happy to be piloting that program. The next
Well, Jay, actually, I just want to ask on that one. No, just a small question, so I mean, obviously, the scope of, the intention of the questions in each of the sections is really deliberate, but when I was reading through them, I wondered about section A, like, how it defines certain disorders and asks about, you know, knowledge on those pieces, and I wondered if we're aware if that was based in the most common disordered issues at that age level, or why they were selected. We don't have to know the answer, it's just something that, yeah, okay. Go ahead, next then.
These are our informational and updates, and so the first, these are administrative due, the first is the emergency school closure, and so it wasn't highlighted, or maybe, was it on there?
No.
Because it's online, it was online, but it's the
It was in one twenty-two.
It really just says people on, just added about people on leave, so the idea was, there's a bit of confusion that when we have a school closure and if we close it to all employees, what happens to people who are on leave, and so if they're already on leave, that's been pre-approved, they just get their leave, so their leave doesn't get canceled, and then they have a day of work, they just use their leave provision for that, but if somebody had canceled a leave prior to us announcing closure, then they would get, either way, people are getting paid, it's just, there's clarity around what happens on leaves, and it's very, it's incredibly rare, I can only think of us having done it one at a time, but it was just to bring clarity to the AP. The next APs are because you haven't seen them, so we're just bringing to you for the first time, but to let you know that the AP one sixty-five, the preparedness is going to the Health and Safety Committee, who are just in the works of putting a meeting together, and we've got a few number of documents, and this is one of them, because it hasn't been reviewed in a long time, so we're going to ask them to review it, and then the independent directors stays, just because you haven't seen it at this point, but it's pretty straightforward, and then really changed for you, so it's just for your information. And the last is the suspension exclusion, exclusion report. And that's my report.
I'll just note that the revised date on the first amendment zero two-two-two says January twenty-twenty-two, just
For you next.
It's January, that's what I've always had, I've spent wrong here. Sorry.
January.
Okay, January. Thank you, thanks.
I don't know, I don't
Was December an anomaly for first drug alcohol offense? Is there being nine, was that like, no?
No, it was just, there's times in the summer, Jay, and lots of good things, but no, it's, it's usually a group of students, right, that get all kind of caught at the same
Okay. No further questions? Motion that the Superintendent of Schools report be received as presented. Kristen and Rob, all in paper. Great. And next to you.
Hey, I have two quick informational items, the first is a follow-up from the committee of the whole, a question was asked about how the resources were divvied up, and I think I fell short of an adequate explanation. So I've included just a literature on the history of the fund, but on the fly, I was literally just overthinking something incredibly simple, so in the table, in the following table, which was in the committee of the whole, and now I made some notes on, the first column is the sixty districts, the second column is their share of the operating grant, our share being thirty, almost thirty-five million. What it's creating in the second, second column is, ignore it, it is a comprehensive formula to arrive at these numbers, but once you do, in the five-point-nine billion dollars, our share is point-six of one percent, whereas the other, the spectrum survey, for example, is twelve-point-six percent is their share. Alls they've done with the Learning Improvement Fund is it's twenty million dollars, and it's divvied up in the same differential as the operating grant, so in the absence of a complex formula, they just took it's like, how does everyone share the money now? They apply that to the twenty million, and help to the next initiative, so, yeah, so that's, that's literally how it's, how that's allocated. That's a bit more clear. And then the last is just the monthly financial summary, as at the end of December, it shows that we have fifty-five percent of the budget remaining, as compared to December of last year, there was fifty-seven, so we're within two percent in both instances, we're on the cusp of producing an amended budget, so these numbers will be updated to reflect the additional revenue we're now, now we're receiving because of the increased enrollment, the additional resources we put into schools in the hurdy-ball, and when you see that in February, the subsequent reports for March, April, May will reflect that new budget. But right now, we're on track, consistent with the last few years, in terms of our rate of spending. There's no other, no questions, that's the balance of my report.
Okay, so a motion that the Secretary of Treasures report be received as presented. Rob and Jaclyn, all in paper. Okay. So that leaves us with our committee of the whole report for January eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Any comment, questions, concerns? Okay, moving forward, that brings us to question period. I think it's really just you, Izzy, no?
Not, not, okay.
Okay, and Paul?
I think the chairperson, I don't have any questions today either.
Okay, thank you. Great, motion to adjourn. Kristen, thank you.
That was very efficient.
Well, thank you all for coming, and I hope everyone appreciated all of the work that goes into these reports that you guys give, and we'll definitely dig into that in our committee of the whole. Thank you.